Good evening, I'd like to call this February 11th meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order with the, and I'll start. Well, no, will the General Counsel please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. President Cog.
Here.
Vice President Bonbright. Present. Director Keating. Director Strozier. And is Director Leon here?
Yeah, I'm on audio for now.
Welcome, we have a quorum, and I'd also like to call roll for our student representatives. Indigo Hill. I just saw Indigo, and then she disappeared. Welcome, Indigo. Nathan Essman.
I'm here.
Welcome. Caitlin Yi.
Here.
Welcome, and Jasmine Pearson.
Here.
Welcome, we have all of our student representatives and alternates present as well.
Thank you, and before moving on to adoption of the agenda, I want to start us off by reading our land acknowledgement, the Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional, ancestral, and historical lands of the Pe'olap Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Pe'olap Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners, the Pe'olap Tribe of Indians, and giving thanks for allowing us passage to their lands who have inhabited this region since time immemorial. We will make intentional efforts to create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor Indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. So with that, we'll move on to item number four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I have motion to adopt.
There is second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about items on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item five, members of the public wishing to address the board. So we want to note that we are still operating with our alternative protocols. The school board encourages public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board during a virtual meeting held under the proclamation by the governor, amending proclamation. We ask it everyone, mute their mics unless they're speaking. You have two options to participate in public comment, and you can follow the steps that are outlined on the agenda, and these steps are also included in detail on the school district's board section of the website. I won't read them, just to spare you all, because they are listed here, but generally, if you'd like to participate live in our public meetings, you just need to email the board secretary at least 24 hours in advance, and we'll be able to bring you into the meeting. You also continue to have the option to submit public comment in writing, and that too just needs to be submitted to the board secretary 24 hours in advance, so that the board can have an opportunity to review your comments before the meeting, and we can get those posted on this official agenda. Tonight, we have three people who have signed up to provide comment live with us, so thank you all for being here. Each of you will have three minutes to speak, and you should be able to see a clock that will count down for you. It'll flash when you have one minute left, and then at the end of your three minutes, we'll ask you to wrap up your comments, and we'll hope that you'll wrap up the comments in the three minutes. So I'll turn it over now to Superintendent Santornal to call each of the speakers by name.
Thank you. First speaker is Kim Knox, and she is speaking regarding the Wilson name change. Welcome, Ms. Knox.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me this time to speak. I would like to start by saying that I am firmly opposed to changing the name of my alma mater, Woodrow Wilson High School. I believe that this issue should have been resolved with the publishing of the survey results that I had to request and did receive from Principal Ray. I find it disheartening that the results were not shared publicly, and if the results were posted, I certainly was unable to locate them. The data in the survey clearly shows that the majority of respondents voted for no name change, since when is a democratic process of majority rules thrown out the window just because a minority group decides it's for their own good? I am not about to defend Woodrow Wilson's personal views or conduct in regards to certain issues that are clearly racist. He was a flawed man. But when has it ever been a good idea to sweep history under the rug? And it is just as apparent that not everything Wilson did was condemnedable. After all, he played an integral role in establishing the League of Nations and received the Nobel Peace Prize for his efforts, among other accomplishments. In my mind, it would be a far greater learning opportunity to have a meaningful conversation during student orientation about Wilson that goes over his achievements as well as his shortcomings. There's a famous quote credited to George Santayana that says, "Those who do not remember the past are condemned to repeat it." Erasing Woodrow Wilson from the high school will only once again bury the truth that needs to be heard by all students, so that Wilson's types of ideology on race can someday with perseverance, understanding, and collaboration be only a distant memory. I can only mirror what I have been hearing from friends and family, many of whom are also Wilson graduates, and also share my opinion of the colossal waste of money a name change would cost. The number I keep hearing is 400,000, which is more than likely just a starting point. How many meals could that provide? How many computers, how many COVID tests could be purchased with this money? Now is not the time to spend these funds on unneeded and unwanted, according to the survey results, name change, when that money can so much more responsibly be used during this unprecedented time. In closing, this name change could start Tacoma schools down a road with a very slippery slope at the end. No matter how racist Wilson was, he was not a slave owner and a distinction that can be attributed to no less than 12 US presidents. There are at least three schools in the Tacoma School District that are currently named after presidents that in some cases had over 500 slaves. Are they on the chopping block next? And as a local taxpayer, I could tell you that I would no more want my tax dollars going to change these names than Wilson's. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Knox. The second speaker is Tom Byrd.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to start by asking the board a question. In this process that's taking place tonight, is this merely a formality or is it legitimate vote? The reason I'm asking, according to the current principle, it was basically a done deal, and the correspondence from the president of the board, it sounded like it was a bit final. Three generations of my family have attended Wilson. In fact, my father was there at the school's inception, and there is currently a building on campus named in his honor. I'm a taxpayer, and I live within a half mile of the school. I would like some transparency in the so-called survey that was sent out. Like, I've stated, I live a half mile from the school. I've asked my neighbors, and nobody seems to know anything about the survey. A lot of them stated they would have liked to have been involved in that process. So was there survey on the school district's website? It sure makes it look like this process has been rushed through. On the $400,000 price tag, do we need to be spending this money currently during a pandemic? Shouldn't we be concentrating on getting the kids back to school and giving them all the resources they need to get back on track and back in school? You should be mindful of this the next time you ask taxpayers for a bond measure. You claim to be good stewards of the community's tax dollars in spending $400,000 a school name change, being the good steward of the tax dollars? Has anyone suggested to the board a study be commissioned on all schools within the district to make sure their names are all in compliance? If we are going down the rabbit hole to be politically correct, we don't want to be labeled as hypocrites. I'm in favor of maybe dropping Woodrow, if that's the point that everybody's worried about, and just calling it Wilson, or maybe we should try some neutral choices like North Tacoma High or Narrows High. At this point, I'm asking a motion to postpone this vote until these issues can maybe be resolved, and that's my statement. Thank you for letting me have that time.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. The next speaker is Dana Olson regarding renaming Wilson High School.
Dear board members, I respectfully request that you postpone the renaming of Wilson High and revisit the proposal to perform more due diligence on the subject. First, I am a proud alumnus of the school. I truly enjoyed my time there. Secondly, most of us alums just refer to the school as Wilson. No thought ever given to the Woodrow. I believe I understand your desire for a name change, given Woodrow Wilson's association with racism, as well as the reason why those associations would promote the outcry for change. However, there seems to me to be a much simpler solution. You can just drop the name Woodrow. I believe most folks would be satisfied with Wilson High School as a name. Certainly, many of us alums who share a legacy with the school would be satisfied with that compromise. Currently, your alternative names for the school reflect your agenda. The agenda may be perfectly noble, however, feedback I am receiving includes a perception that those names were not adequately presented for consensus, nor were alternative options forwarded to the public for consideration. I would like to believe your desire on this name change was well-intentioned. I would also like to believe none of us following the issue are promoting, condoning, or legitimizing racism. It does, however, appear that we interested parties hold a perception that this name change process lacked sufficient notification, transparency, and due diligence. We also hold the concern that there was not sufficient input from all relative stakeholders from the start. You may disagree with this assertion, however, that does not help to address our concerns today. If you are going to begin naming and renaming schools based on current, past political, or historical figures, you are forever needing to reevaluate and judge your named institutions through the lenses of politics and the social conscience of the current day. A reasoned individual understands that politics and the social conscience is ever-changing. That is precisely why we are discussing a name change now. What is acceptable today may not be acceptable tomorrow. Societal changes are inevitable. So then, what purity test will you apply, will you apply or use to judge the worthiness of a school name in the future? Seems to be a precarious way to maintain a system. If you are considering, condensing the name to Wilson, which I would call a generic surname, yeah, generic surname, is not acceptable, may I suggest you rethink your naming process entirely. You might consider not using any historical or political figure names at all, and instead opt for neutral names. I recommend that to help everyone, to make everyone happy during these volatile times, you consider choosing generic names that are not biased toward gender, race, or religious preference. The board would be wise to follow what most smart school districts are doing nowadays, and pick from generic names that appeal to all the stakeholders. Examples include Puget Sound High School, North Tacoma High School, or Narrows High School. We urge you to choose something like neighboring communities have done, such as Harbor High School, Ninsola High School.
Ms. Olson, your time has expired, I'll ask that you wrap up your last comment.
Oh, okay. Only you can address our concerns by delaying your vote and conducting a further review of your process. Please reconsider and postpone your vote at this time, and let us continue with a constructive dialogue. I would like to believe we can all come together and reach common ground.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. The next constituents chose to write a position, and so it will be attached to the agenda, that is Connie Prescott Perry regarding opposing the name change Woodrow Wilson High School. Wendy DeRae, Wendy DeRae, she has three topics, I believe. Number one, TPS should implement protocols of testing, that's one. Two, AMPM cohorts. Three, and eating in the classroom to improve safety for students, staff, and the community. And then the third statement is from David Morse regarding proposed Wilson renaming. Those are all of our members of the public wishing to address the board.
Thank you very much, and thank you all who submitted a comment in writing, and for those of you who participated tonight. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. There are none tonight. Item number seven, 7.1 COVID-19 updates.
Thank you, and Dr. Garcia is going to give the COVID update this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Tom, can we bring up the slides, please? So it is February 11th, 2021, and we are still in our COVID plan, and we wanted to give you an update. Next slide, please. We have moved in, as Pierce County, into the moderate phase, which is the yellow phase, and so that is good news, because our community transmission rates are on a decline. And so we are in the moderate phase now for Pierce County, and then our region with the King County and Snohomish County, we are considered a Phase Two as well. Next slide, please. So tonight, we wanted to focus in on the question around what's next, and we've gotten a lot of questions from families about other grade levels that we have communicated to. So we want to, we continue to understand that this is a challenging time for all families, and we recognize that there are difficult choices to be made, but we have a number of folks that are out there helping us think about how to offer a phased-in approach that allows both students and staff some time to adjust to the new health requirements on daily schedule. We know that there will be some folks that are still nervous about this, and we want to remind them that there is some options. Tacoma Online is an option, and we will continue to work with them to ensure that we are staying up to date with all the safety protocols. Next slide, please. So what many folks may have received through our newsletters or updates from their principals is on the left-hand side of the column, and that is where we are currently at. You can see that we started first graders on two days a week this week, so we currently have kindergartners in two days a week, we have preschoolers in two days a week, and we started our first graders two days a week. And starting on Tuesday, second graders are going to go to two days a week. And you'll see, I apologize, there's a type error there. Tuesday, the 16th, kindergartners are going to go four days a week. And then Monday, February 22nd, first graders will go four days a week. So this will see, you'll see that it's pattern of March 1st, second graders going four days a week. So as students have, the youngest students have had a chance to be on campus, will increase their time in there now that we're in the moderate phase. This will be the plan for those students for the rest of the year, unless the numbers change one way or the other, but families should plan that K12 will be in school four days a week after March 1st. Some additional dates that we have started to announce this week, our third graders will be coming back starting March 1st, and they will be in two-day-a-week cohorts, and they will remain in there as long as the COVID-19 numbers allow us for the rest of the year. We will not be expanding third graders, fourth graders, or fifth graders beyond two days a week. And that is because of the physical space on the campuses to do that. So March 1st, third graders will come two days a week, and then March 15th, fourth graders will come two days a week, and then starting March 22nd, fifth graders will come two days a week. Your principals will be giving you, if you're in those grades, third, fourth, and fifth, your cohort assignments in the upcoming weeks, and so we will be communicating those to you. Next slide, please, Tom. For our middle school students, we are going to start the first week in March as well, but I'd like to put a little caveat in here. There are conferences that you'll notice, I think, that are, I believe, March 11th and 12th. And so our sixth graders are actually going to start Thursday, March 4th, and that'll start with Cohort B. And Cohort B will go both Thursday and Friday, and then starting March 8th, Cohort A will have their first days on campus, Monday, March 8th, and Tuesday, March 9th, and then they'll have our Wednesday day, they'll have two days of conferences, and then March 15th will be in a regular schedule of two-day-a-week cohorts. March 22nd, our seventh graders will be our scheduled to join us on campuses, and they will also be in cohorts. And then Monday, March 29th, we will also be in cohorts for our eighth graders, and middle schoolers will remain in cohorts for the remainder of the school year, or unless state guidance, I should often say, changes as well, but we plan on this for the remainder of the school year. Next slide, please. Our high schoolers, we are going to start with our seniors first. This will give our seniors a chance to be back in their buildings. We recognize that they've had a very difficult time, and we need to get them back on our campuses, and they will also be able to help us as mentors and role models. So March 15th, our seniors will come back on campuses in cohorts. And then March 22nd, we are going to bring our ninth graders back on campus on cohorts. And then Monday, March 29th, grades 10 and 11 will come back in cohorts. Next slide, please. So this is what it will look like on a calendar, so you can kind of see that there's grade levels at a week, and there is a recognition that many of our schools, so third grade and sixth grade, obviously, they're on two different campuses in many places, although we do recognize that there are some schools where that isn't the case, and so we're working with those schools to make sure that their protocols are set. The other piece that I would just add as a caveat, we do recognize that some schools are partner schools, Idea, Sammy &amp; Soda have different spring breaks, and so they may see some different dates that have been presented tonight, but we will make sure that our families see those and are communicating. Our students will get an email that'll let them know that this schedule is, so that they can plan, our secondary students, and this is what the calendar will look like, and you'll see that from February and then almost all the way to spring break, we will be there. Next slide, please. There are a few other updates that we would like to bring to you. We were able to, a big thank you to Liz Ranko and Ranko's Pharmacy. It's a family-owned business right up in the stadium neighborhood. They helped us put on a clinic yesterday at a very last minute for our staff. We are in partnership with some other local pharmacies to do that, but we really want to give Liz and her team a big shout-out tonight to help thank that nearly 200 staff members were able to receive vaccinations, and those are staff members that qualified for the phase that they are. High school sports have launched, and we are scheduled, if the snow doesn't cancel us, to have a football game tomorrow night. We have begun our graduation planning, and we are currently planning for an onsite graduation within COVID guidance. We will continue to do that. We are also working on scheduling for 21, 22 school year, and so as families start to understand it, they will even looking at, what are my class schedules for next year, and what are the classes that I want to take? And so we'll be working on those throughout the spring, and then we're also obviously working with the governor's office and the OSBI to say, are there guidelines going to be changed? And no one knows that for the fall yet, but we're closely monitoring that. We just want to continue to remind folks, grades 3 through 12 will remain in cohorts for the remainder of the school year. Our summer learning, we've begun that planning, and families should understand that we will be offering both in-person and remote learning opportunities, and then we are also looking at our jumpstart activities. Next slide, please, and that is our COVID update for tonight. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Open up to questions from the board. Vice President Bonbright, any comments or questions about tonight's update?
Well, I want to thank the whole team for putting together that, you know, a little bit more clearly what's going to be happening, bringing kids back, and it feels good to start getting kids back into school, and I know we've had the youngest ones there for a few days, and for a couple of weeks, and we've been having some great success. Just as a point of clarification, Dr. Garcia, when you say cohorts, do you mean that they're going to be in the same cohorts, the A, B cohorts, like coming to school just two days a week, but also being asynchronous on the other days? So maybe you could describe a cohort, so when you say that, people are clear about what you mean, for those that are not coming back four days a week?
Yep, so I'll start with the elementary, the cohorts. The cohorts, they will be two days a week, grades 3 through 5, and then Wednesdays, they have an opportunity to connect with their teachers, and there's some different flexibilities there for both our classroom teachers and our schools on what that looks like, because they have to meet their needs of their students from where they are. And so we want to make sure that that is there. So Wednesdays is an opportunity to have some whole groups instruction, some small groups instruction, but that will be done in a remote fashion. That will be done in a remote fashion. And then the two days that they are not in their cohorts, they will be doing asynchronous learning activities during those times, okay? And so if you have a student out there and they say, oh, we don't have anything to do today, please contact your teacher, because there's asynchronous learning activities that those students should be doing during those times. In the middle school levels, they, and we presented this schedule to you as well, and it's been out now, we're actually in the start of it, they will be doing remote learning in the mornings as whole group, and that while in there, and in the afternoons, they will be coming in their cohorts. So two days a week in their cohorts in the afternoons each. Wednesdays, well, once again, it has some flexibility and building-specific design for both whole groups, small group, and one-to-one supports with their teachers. And so, and the high schools mirror that same schedule. So in the mornings, remote learning, and that gives their teacher a chance for the teachers and the students to connect more regularly than just the two days of cohorts. And then the high school students, once again, will have the afternoons cohorts on campus two days a week.
Thank you, that really makes it much more clear. Thanks.
Any other questions? I didn't, I don't want to cut you off. Okay. Director Strozier, any questions or comments? Okay, Director Leon, any comments or questions about the update?
Sure, thanks, I just want to thank your whole team, all the staff. Really, this has taken the whole community to bring this infection rate down that we have, so this is allowing us to bring kids back in front of staff and teachers, not only to get better learning, but really the mental health piece that has been so severe on our youth is going to improve with this. So I just want to thank your whole team for this effort. Thank you. And the testing, and sorry, not the testing, but the vaccines were really key in getting that partnership, and we're looking forward to trying to get more of those for our teachers that qualify for that phased approach. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Keating, any comments or questions? Okay. I also just want to thank the team and all of our partners in the community who have helped to make our coordination around vaccines happen, and just all of the pieces of this puzzle. I think that a few weeks ago, when we initially announced that we were going to start implementing the hybrid model and bringing some students back, there was a lot of apprehension in the community expressed through some of the emails we received, just about all the uncertainty about how will we do it, PPE, vaccine access, there's just so many pieces to this puzzle, and I don't think that we were able to answer every question that came in in detail right at that time, but I think as a team, we were confident that you all were working on all of these parts, and the wheels were in motion, so I just really appreciate that at this stage, it's clear that some of those trains have gotten into the stations, a little bit more on wheels in motion, trains in stations, but it's just clear that some of the pieces are coming together, and that the team is continuing to move multiple boulders up the hill. So thank you for that work, and thank you to everyone in the community, on both the public health side and the pharmacy side, and all places who are making this happen, and for parents and students for being flexible too in the way that you've responded and engaged. Thank you for that. I'll go to Director Keating, and then back to Deputy Superintendent Garcia.
Yeah, I, thank you. And actually, Vice President Bonbright asked my question around cohorts, and in just wanting a more broad or a clearer definition, so thank you for that. I just wanted to share that I was in conversation with a parent of a kindergartner last week, and they were talking about how, one, they were really grateful that their kindergartner is back in school, and what they also said that they didn't fully understand was how their child's mental health had been impacted, and that the child, since being able to be back in class face-to-face, their their mental health has improved dramatically. And the parent was pretty emotional because they were just explaining that it was like, how does a kindergartner explain that they were depressed? And even though they were, as parents and a family, trying to do everything they could to support, like they just, there's this lightness and just, they feel like they're seeing a child that they, they're recognizing the child that they know by being back in school. And I think that it's, you know, there are a lot of considerations. There's a lot of risks. And I think having face-to-face interactions with students actually gives us a better understanding of what their needs are and their mental health and the impacts of being in such a remote setting for a long period of time. So I was really moved by what this parent had shared with me. And I just wanted to, I know that our classroom teachers and our building admin and support staff are working so hard to keep people safe, keep children safe. And so, I just want to say thank you. And I know there's more work to do, but I just, yeah, just wanted to share that story about the mental health piece.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent Garcia?
Yes, and you know, we've really tried to acknowledge all the efforts of all of our teams, right, that are working on this. It truly is a team effort. I was, I'm the first to admit that I am never perfect. And I will always seize an opportunity to be grateful. I have been remiss to not explicitly thank the safety and security team of the Tacoma Public Schools. They have been out there numerous days since day one, and they have done all kinds of roles. And so, I just wanted to take a moment, when I realized that, to publicly acknowledge them and thank them as well as all the other staff. And once again, if I have missed you, I apologize. Please let me know. I would be honored to acknowledge folks as their hard work because this is truly a team effort. And when we say that also, a big thank you to our parents and our families. There has been a lot of information, questions, apprehension, desire to be back on campuses. And they have positioned our students to be successful when they were there. They have gotten them to wear their masks. They've helped them be successful. So a big thank you to them as well. So thank you.
Any final words? Nope, hearing none. We will keep moving. 7.2 Head Start Policy Council update.
So, we often, we ask our, regularly, our Head Start Policy Council to come and give us an update on the work they've done. And so, I'd ask, Michelle Raw Lewis has a parent that's going to give us a report. We love that. And so, Michelle, would you please introduce our speaker? Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity for us to be here tonight. And it is my honor to introduce Kelly White. Kelly is our Policy Council Chair. This is her second year within our Head Start program, and she is going to be giving us an update on all of the great things that they've been working on throughout the year. Thank you, Kelly.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to thank Head Start and the board for the opportunity to speak tonight. And like Michelle said, this is my second year serving on Policy Council and as chairperson. It's hard to think that I ended my first term with the beginning of a pandemic. Now, I feel like it's all I know. I learned on Policy Council, I learned of Policy Council through our family advocate, Valentina. We all say that we want to be more involved in our children's education. However, there is an overwhelming lack of opportunity for parents to do this. My husband is a Tacoma Public School high school teacher, and I ran a boutique, working 40 to 50 hours a week, nights, weekends, and holidays. I decided to not let our schedules be an excuse, and I volunteered. Policy Council has a low time commitment, but is highly impactful. And I've come to realize that parents are the pillars of this program. Throughout my time on Policy Council, we have made major decisions. Specifically, we voted to use our COVID funding to supply a tablet and access to high-speed internet to every Head Start family. And this technology has been essential and gives families the opportunity to maintain an open line of communication with advocates and teachers who provide educational, vocational, financial, and holistic support and resources to families who might not otherwise have access to them. This year has been extremely challenging, and I was not prepared to leave my career and become a full-time, stay-at-home homeschooling mom. And I have not been the face of perfection either. I hit a breaking point. Ms. Marta, my son's teacher at Geiger, recognized that my son and I were struggling, and she reached out to me. And without judgment, she listened, offered me reassurance, empathy, understanding, and direction. And I took that direction, and together, we made strides to ensure that my son was getting the best of both of us. When the date finally came for hybrid learning to start, I was and still am worried about the health of my son and the teachers that I've grown to care about. Because of the relationship I have with Valentina, our advocate, Ms. Marta, our teacher, and the Head Start administration, I felt confident in expressing my concerns. Ms. Marta, just like so many times before, took the time to walk me through every detail and eased my mind. And there was no holding back my son's enthusiasm to finally be back at school. This year has been a tough one, but through it all, I'm in awe of our teachers and parents in our Head Start program. Thank you again, and I can take questions too.
Thank you, Kelly, for being here with us tonight. Any questions or comments from members of the board? I'll start with maybe Director Keating. You're in my top picture.
Yeah, the squares always move. Thank you, Kelly, for being here and presenting. I actually know Ms. Marta and have done some work in her classroom over a couple of years when that was allowed. But, and I attest that Ms. Marta is amazing and just a wonderful, wonderful teacher. So I'm excited that you're having, you know, your family's having such a positive experience with her. And I just, I just wanted to say, I share the love.
Thank you. Any other comments, Director Strozer? No? Director Leon?
Thanks for volunteering. I think it's just an important part. It shows the whole community that we can't do this alone. We really need parent-community involvement to understand what the best way is to educate our kids. So thank you very much for giving that time.
Director Bonbright, any comments? You're on mute if you're saying anything. I can't see your face on my screen. I'll soon know unless you loop back. I just have a couple of questions, though. Just from a parent perspective of the littles, and that's not me. So it's hard to put myself well. Just, I know at different stages in our kids' lives, there's different preferred modes of communication. Can you share a little bit about what's been effective in terms of communication, especially the communication of the rollout of changes? And like the plan to move to hybrid plan, just the rollout of everything? And what's been some, a bit of a barrier or area that we could have improved from your perspective? And I know it was just one family, but still.
Absolutely. I think that's a really good question because to kind of go back to what was said earlier, it's a two-way street. It's parent involvement, but it's also communication from administration and your teachers. I feel like the most effective form of communication has been the relationship that I've built with our family advocate, Valentina, and our teacher, Ms. Marta. They have been honestly my source of information and communication throughout the whole pandemic, since it started from the beginning. And I, you know, have the, I'm fortunate enough to be chairperson of Policy Council, so I also have access to the Head Start administration as well. So Michelle has been a great wealth of resources to me as well, which I think is invaluable. And I wish that more parents felt like they could volunteer and get involved. Through all of this, it has been overwhelming. And there's been a lot of communication that, you know, just comes flying past us and that things change. And I think having Ms. Marta be kind of our main source of information and having Michelle, who kind of has helped me understand kind of the behind-the-scenes of things too, it's funneled that information and has made it a lot easier to digest. And because it's easier to digest and because of this relationship that I've developed with them, it has made it more, it's made it, it's made it less anxious for me. It's made it, made it more doable. I think if you don't have that relationship with your, with your advocate or with your teacher, it can be really, really tough to decipher the information you get on Facebook, the information that you get from your friends who know friends who know friends who know friends, and then seeing the emails that come out from Tacoma Public Schools. It's hard, right, because you're getting conflicting information all the time. So I would say it's strongly related to my family advocate and my teacher.
Thank you. And just lastly, it's more of a curiosity than like a question. I don't know, maybe you'll have input right now. But in the context of the K-12 program, and I'd say probably, we, as a matter of emergency response, we've had to secure devices for students to be able to access instruction across the district. And it sounds like as a Policy Council, you all made the decision too to use your resources to provide internet access and access tablets. As we move forward, I think, from the K-12 perspective, for many, many years, we've always thought that the digital divide was an issue. But in Tacoma, we hadn't taken a step to try to figure out like a one-to-one device program. But moving forward, it seems pretty critical that we try to figure out a way to maintain that. In the pre-K context, I'm not sure if that same dynamic exists. And so, it'd be great to know, like, to get real input from you all because you're using these devices right now about whether you see any real need moving forward. Like, I just would be curious to understand, like, in a non-emergency setting, like, what's best practice around kids of this age accessing devices? I think my assumption is it's not great, and all that screen time isn't good. But it'd be just good to know if there are like ways that kids have used them to tap into activities or other things that are beneficial. So I just would love your take on it. And maybe, Ms. Michelle, if we, just having feedback and maybe Friday Report or somewhere else about that, just to write insight to the board, that'd be helpful for me.
I think from my perspective as a parent, the tablet is used for educational resources. My son does not have a whole lot of interest in it besides what we call Ms. Marta work. And so, we use it for Ms. Marta work, and then we put it on its charger, and we take really good care of it, and we put it aside. He does have other opportunities in our household to watch TV and to, you know, kind of look and see what his sister is doing or what I'm doing on my cell phone, and I have games on my cell phone too. But when it comes to the tablets, it has been absolutely essential in making, creating a consistency from what they're doing at school and what I'm capable of doing at home. And not only that, but it has provided that necessary interaction between teacher and advocate and parent. And I think going forward, whenever we don't necessarily need that to be 100% the way that we communicate with our teacher, I think that it has broken down that kind of divide where you can ignore a phone call, but whenever you have somebody calling your teams on the tablet and your son is like, answer? Whether you like it or not, you're right there face-to-face with your advocate or with your teacher. And I think that that's, I think that's so invaluable to have that technology. And I think as a parent, you have to take that responsibility to limit screen time. The tablet is an iPad, so you can actually get into the settings and limit the screen time. I haven't felt like I needed to do that because my son thinks it's all about Ms. Marta. And so, when he's done with it, he's done with it. But you can go in there and limit the screen time. But that is a responsibility that you would have to take on yourself as a parent. But I believe that going forward, the families having access to the same resources that teachers have in their classroom, and they can bring that home with them and have the direction and the understanding of how to use it, you're creating consistency. You're creating a mode of transportation from the classroom to the home.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I see Director Bonbright now. Did you have any questions or comments before we? Before we?
Well, I, no, sorry, my computer just completely freaked out on me, so I had to jump to my phone. I have no idea. So I missed some of what you said, but I heard that last part, Kelly. And I just want to thank you so much for, first of all, for all the time that you have dedicated to, you know, the Head Start Policy Council. Because I know it is transformational for everyone I've ever spoken to that's participated. They've always said it was a life-changing experience. And so, thank you for taking the time. And I'm glad that you're also having that wonderful, and for being the chair. I know that's an extra load. And I think, I love to hear you talk about your son and his experiences and the joy that, and the commitment that he has to the learning experience. And thank you for modeling that as well. And please pass on our gratitude to all of the members of the Head Start Policy Council and our gratitude and our appreciation for their dedication and their time and dedication. And Michelle, I hope you can pass that on along as well to, you run a great team over there in the early childhood division, and we're so proud of all the work that you and all of the folks over there do. So, thank you.
And we should give you a chance to chime in too, Michelle, if you want to say anything before we move on. Not, no pressure, though.
I just wanted to just take a moment to talk to where we move forward with the devices that we purchased. We have found just this amazing connection, as Kelly spoke to, with families. And we know that in these difficult times, as well as normal, what we consider normal times, families have a lot on their plate. And having these devices available that are also not only offering the educational experience for the student, but having family engagement opportunities on these devices for the families has been instrumental in family and parent participation and communication. Although, we know, of course, that hands-on learning and in-person learning is the best way for our littles to learn and thrive. We also think it's very important that they have an opportunity to learn on a device, to prepare them for the K-12 world that is their next endeavor within their academic career. But, yeah, I just wanted to just speak just for a moment about the significant and the advantages that we have found just being able to have a device in the hands of all of our preschool families. Thank you.
Yeah, that just sparks a lot of ideas for me, just like, even like when it's time for family, like family engagement surveys. Like, everybody's got a device now. Like, can we just put it on the home screen and prompt people to go? So I appreciate you all sharing that nuance about it and how the devices can be used to support family engagement moving forward. So thank you. Again, Kelly, thank you for being with us, and we look forward to the next round of updates.
Thank you. Thank you so much again.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda.
There's a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Item number nine, policy matters. There are none tonight. Item number 10, curriculum and instruction. There are, wait, item number 10, financial report. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. The next quarterly report is planned for February 25th, 2021. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website Item number 11, curriculum and instruction. There are no curriculum and instruction matters tonight. Item number 12, 12.1, approval of Power Schools Group Schoology Learning Management System in Tacoma Public Schools from August 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2023.
The deputy superintendent, on behalf of the director of DART, recommends the board of directors of
recommends the Board of Directors approved contract number TSD-20-210, Power School Group LLC, from August 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2023, Funding Source Technology Budget.
Is there a motion to adopt item 12.1?
I motion to adopt.
There's a second? Is there any questions or comments from the board about this item? Dr. Kurt Sia, can you just explain more? I know everyone's in the midst of using Schoology, but what does the platform really provide for the district? Can you share a little bit about the hole that it fills or the?
Yes, so Schoology is what, in the industry, they call a learning management system. So it really allows us to, it's a tool to provide instruction and engagement, students to submit their work. And so it's, it's really, it becomes the virtual classroom. So remember last spring, we had Teams, but there wasn't, Teams was, has evolved since then. But there wasn't really these opportunities for students to submit work, for there to be files organized in a manner for teachers to communicate. And the learning management system, which went through an RFP process and we selected the vendor Schoology, allows us to do that. It, it helps produce and facilitate some P-12 alignment. It can help support assessments, additional resources for students. It can be a communication tool. So it's kind of a, more of a holistic learning management system for the, the district.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting?
I think Director Keating has her hand up.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see it. I, I had my window.
Yeah, for the public, because I know that we approved Schoology previously, could you explain to the public why we're, what, what the purpose of this is tonight?
Yeah, that's a great question. It allows us, and what we're voting on now is basically an amendment that allows us, if the Schoology platform is successful, to continue it for two more years beyond this. So it becomes, it goes from a three-year to a five-year with the amendment. And what we've learned since there is, we've, we haven't stopped learning since we obviously have made the commitment, that it's really important that the implementation takes time, right? And so we not only need to secure time for that, but having the stability for our, and the promise to our classroom teachers, to our families of the same tool and not just asking folks to learn a new tool every three years is something that we learned from other districts to really provides a self-ability of confidence, stability, and then learning to better use the tool.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.1, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 12.2, authorization for the purchase of furniture and equipment at Hunt Middle School from Evergreen Furnishings.
Yes, I wanted to provide the public and the board some context and why we have an agenda item with an estimated spend and not a firm amount. Due to COVID-19 impacts and disruptions of the supply chain, closures of nonessential businesses, we had to kind of operate in unconventional manner when it came to ordering furniture. And at times, we had to order earlier than expected with the intention of coming to the board at a later date when we get to that $200,000 threshold to seek approval. If our, our team had not somewhat operated under those unconventional manners, we would have risked opening Hunt Middle School and fall without furniture. And that's something our team did not want to be part of messaging to the board, the public, and especially our students. So our procurement team and construction team did a wonderful job. With that said, the Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent or designated to expand 200,000 to 300,000 furniture and equipment at Hunt Middle School from Evergreen Furnishing in agreement with the KCDA.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 12.2?
Move to adopt item 12.2.
There's a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from the board?
I just have? Oh, sorry. I just wanted to say I periodically drive by Hunt because it's really exciting. And it just, it, it looks really amazing and I'm very, very excited to see like students in the building. And yeah, I mean, it's a long time coming, I know. And so I just want to give you and your team just kudos because it, it's a really cool-looking building. So, thanks.
Mr. Williams, do you anticipate like continued supply chain issues related to furniture? Like, or were these like Lysol and like in the first six months, like you couldn't find it, but then they ramped up production and figured out different? Like, do you anticipate this being ongoing or is this?
Potentially, we could have more disruptions with the supply chain as, you know, more industries go back to locking down and opening up. Right now, we're working, we have great partners that are constantly monitoring the situation and keep us ahead of the game. So it's something we're prepared for, looking at mitigating risk at all costs. So we're prepared for.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of adopting item 12.2, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is adopted. We will have furniture at Hunt Middle School. Thank you. Yeah, moving on to item number 13, other business. 13.1, rename Wilson High School to Dr. Dolores Silas High School.
The Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors rename Woodrow Wilson High School to Dr. Dolores Silas High School effective July 1, 2021.
Thank you. And just before opening up to questions or comments from the board, I just want to remind the, the public that this item came to us by way of a recommendation from the Superintendent and was triggered in response to our policy 6970 on facilities renaming. So a group of community members brought this recommendation and this request to the district wasn't initiated by the board or by the Superintendent and unilaterally, it came from outside of the district to us via our policy. So the recommendation we have before us reflects a request from members of the community. And I just wanted to reiterate that for context for members of the community who might be listening. So I'll open up for comments or questions from members of the board. Maybe I'll start with Director Stroger.
Thank you. I appreciate it. In, in conversation with folks regarding this, the name change situation, there was a one constant, consistent statement. You can't change the past. I gotta agree, right? We can't change the past. What we can do is operate in a way that'll change our future. And you can't change people either. So as much as folks may want to believe that this is about us, it's not. Think it's about the, the class of whatever, it's not. What this is about is the students that we serve day in and day out. How do we foster environments that allow them to be successful? Environments that are as free and clear of racism, bigotry, hate as they can be. I'll say this, and some folks may know, others might not know, but Princeton removed Woodrow Wilson's name from all programs and buildings at the university. And in the research behind this, it was found that, you know, Woodrow Wilson was a vocal Klan supporter, that was enough for me, oversaw resegregation of the federal government after Reconstruction. I, I could go on and on, but this ain't the time or the place for that. So yes, we, we can't change the past and we can learn from it. And what I've learned from the past is that we have to actively mold, shape, and change our current situation so that in the future, the past that many might seem to be so comfortable with won't be repeated. So let's not get it twisted. I have to echo. A name change does not take the place of systemic change, but it does show that we are ready and willing to do the hard work of confronting racism and other injustices. There's more work ahead of us than behind us. I understand that. I could go on forever, so I'm gonna get a remainder of time back so that my other more colleagues can share as well. Thank you, President Cobb.
Thank you. And because each of you came on camera, I'm gonna take that as a sign that you want to speak. So I'm gonna take some time to pivot to our student representatives. I'll start with Jasmine. Ms. Pearson, do you have comments tonight?
Yes, thank you. While I am not a Wilson student, I feel I need to take advantage of the privilege I have as a student representative of this board. I would like to voice my support of the name change to Dr. Dolores Silas High School. Names are important. They hold meaning. My last name, Pearson, can most likely be traced back to those who owned my ancestors who were forced into slavery. That is the unfortunate truth to my name. To those who personally understand the burden of these truths, a name change is not just a chance to be politically correct, but a chance to stand on the right side of history, to foster a new truth. It is not enough to be neutral. It is not enough to not be racist. We must all take a stance and take clear actions to be anti-racist. And this name change is a good first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Indigo, did you have comments tonight?
Of course. While I understand the concerns of our alumni, I really want to stress that if we aren't doing this now, then when are we going to do it? When is the perfect time to be anti-racist? When is the perfect time to take those steps forward, to make the students more comfortable and to take the steps that we need to become a better community and a more welcoming community? And, and time is now. The time, the time has always been now. But we are given this opportunity to take advantage of the voices in our community and take advantage of the opportunity that's given to us right now. And I think we should definitely do that. And while we may not all be on the same page, I want to come back to the original purpose of this name change and why we are really doing this. And we're doing this to be anti-racist. We're doing this to stop, you know, promote systemic change and stop those systemic races. You know what I'm trying to say? But I really just want to stress that and come back to the purpose of why we're doing this. And we are all on the same page that we should be anti-racist and racism should not exist and we should take those steps to move forward.
Thank you. Nathan, did you want to share some comments tonight?
Yeah, sure. Something that I remember we talked about in previous meetings and I want to bring up again is like the school and all of the amazing opportunities. It's, I mean, it's a great school and that's not going to change just because name changes. And I, and I think the name change is probably going to make it even better, honestly. That's, that's the truth. And, you know, not only will it prove itself by having all those amazing opportunities that the school has, all the great teachers, great classes, but also the school represents something greater, you know, showing that the city cares and that the community can make a change if they see fit. You know, and I think that's something you brought up again, that it was community members who incited this and I think that's, that's great. So yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. And I'll move back to board members. Director Leon, did you have comments tonight?
Yes, thanks. So I echo what everyone said so far. I agree with the improvements that have been made. And this is the time to talk about this. If Director Stroger wants more time, I think he should have it to see if he wants to discuss it more. This is the time. So I do think that we've heard from lots of alumni. We've heard pros, and not just from alumni, but other people, but we've heard a lot of alumni that are hesitant and some that just are, you know, do not want this to happen, of course. We've heard from them today and in other manners. I think it's important that we, as we've all said, remember the reasons why we're doing this and that while these racist thoughts were present long, long before President Wilson was in, in office, there was an awakening around the time of the Civil War where the majority of people in this country and the world really figured out that slavery was, was a horrible evil thing. So I think some people talk about changing all the names of all the schools of all the presidents. And that, that can still be debated, but this is something that was upfront and center and there was an awakening in the world and this country to know that that was wrong, when before it was still wrong, maybe that awakening hadn't happened. So I just want to make sure that folks know also that their diploma is just as valid and strong and means all it ever meant before. Even if this name change is the Wilson diploma you have from previous alumni classes is still means that you did great work and got a good education there. But then some folks were wondering if the diploma is going to mean anything. It, it still will be just, just as strong. So I'll let others continue. I think there, there's, there are lots of comments around the money that it's going to cost to change the name. That is, I think, invalid discussion, but I feel like it is well worth the money to make such a strong statement. Thank you.
Director Keating, do you have comments tonight?
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna actually read what I wrote because I wanted to be really thoughtful and collected around this because we've received so, quite a bit of, we've been in this conversation for a while. This process is centered on reconciliation. A name change doesn't erase your history, it adds to it. I will forever be a Woodrow Wilson High School graduate as every other Wilson graduate before me. The names of buildings, stadiums, and people change all the time. What must not be lost sight of today is that this all began because of the history, legacy, and impacts of racism. So many of the emails we've received in opposition to this recommendation have appalled me. Some have called this the lynching of Woodrow Wilson. The practice of lynching has been historically used to terrorize and murder Black Americans. Using such a comparison is offensive. I'm embarrassed that my Black colleagues and our Black superintendent and our Blacks student representatives, well, you're not, pardon me, are subjected to such awful language. I will never know or understand the emotional impact of, of having to receive comments and this kind of language. I can deeply empathize, having been subject to years of vulgar, dehumanizing language toward myself and my family and my transgender child, simply for who she is and what our family represents. So I understand the, the anger behind something, behind change and things that we don't understand. I will never understand what it's, what it's like to be a victim and subjected to racism. I've spent a significant amount of time reflecting on history and legacies during this process and this issue is really deep, personal, deeply personal to me. I have a great uncle who was a sheriff in southwest Washington who was killed in the line of duty. There was a photo in the local newspaper about his death on the front page. The funeral procession took place through the main street of the town. His pallbearers were dressed in KKK hoods and cloaks. It is a part of my family's history I can never erase. I have a copy of this article as a reminder of my own family's history and legacy. Our nation's history is steeped in egregious unspeakable violence, most notably against Black and Indigenous people in this country. Even though my family tree has KKK members in it, my ancestors' legacy is not a reflection of me, nor does it define me. However, that legacy does come with a responsibility, one that I take to heart, to work towards the end of racism. If my vote this evening can help contribute to the reconciliation and healing of our past, then I have taken another step to repair the harm of my ancestors, our community, and this nation's past.
Thank you, Director Keating. Director Bond, right? Any comments tonight?
Wow. Yeah, and I, and they just flew out of my head as Director Keating's powerful comments just. I want to, I want to thank you, Director Keating, as well as, you know, Dr. Stroger, Dr. Leon, all of, all of the student board participants who have, who have shared tonight. This is a difficult issue and it's, it's one that's a difficult issue that we're facing every day in different ways. And one of the reasons I'm incredibly proud to be part of Tacoma Public Schools and part of Tacoma is that Tacoma, as a city and as a community, is taking this issue on and, and head on. And, and that's, that's what we're trying to do is to, to make sure that we, that every time a child walks into a school building, that they're proud to be there. to make sure that we, that every time a child walks into a school building, that they're proud to be there and that they're not feeling belittled or underappreciated or um devalued in any way. And so this is a step in that direction and to those who wrote in feeling incredibly nostalgic about their high school, um, I would just say, as, as it is Woodrow Wilson High School is where you graduated from and you will be forever proud of that and can and be. But the time is now for us to do a new face to that building and, and be more um open and um supportive of the, a student body that goes there. Uh, that probably looked incredibly different now than it did um in the 1970s. We've, we've heard a lot, uh, many letters from people that graduated in the seventies. Um, and right now, Woodrow Wilson, the student body has a different makeup. And I think that it's critically important that we reflect, that the name reflects pride in someone who looks like some of the, more of the student body. Um, and Dr. um Dolores Silas is an amazing woman who has been a leader in this city. Um, and has, has uh been, is someone we can be proud of into the future. And I want to say too, speaking to process, that um as President Cobb mentioned, the, this came to the board as a request from the community. Um, there was a community process and they, it came to the community. And as part of that, it is not um, the board's choice or even uh role to pick the name, but to take from names that, that are presented to us from the community. And so um, I really have to say, I was proud to see Dr. Silas on that list and grateful that we had that opportunity to, to pass, to name the school after her. Um, and so I just want to say it's very, it changes heart. Um, but we need to step up and do the right thing. And um, I wish I'd written down what Director Stroger said at the beginning, but he got me going and I was all excited. And then, as I said, Dr. Keating spoke and then I forgot, but I was going to quote you. Uh, because I really felt like um, Dr. Stroger, I mean Director Stroger, you had a statement at the beginning about if we, if we don't, you know, now's the time to step forward and not look back. So um, thank you um for saying that and thank you for sticking up and appreciate it.
Any other comments? Um, does anyone want to add to what they've already said? I'll offer a couple of comments, but um, so I just, I wrote some things down, but some of the sentiment has already been expressed by other colleagues on the board. I just do want to emphasize that I don't think this board, and I'll speak for myself, I don't believe that any of us are perfect. And I think that when we aspire to the leadership roles, um regardless of who you are, unless you're very motivated only by your own aspirations, and I don't think that's generally the case in people who aspire to leadership roles, you generally strive to do the best that you can. And I don't doubt that um um, President Woodrow Wilson um was striving to do the best that he could. And I think some of um his beliefs and his actions were informed by how he grew up, the culture and climate um that he was surrounded by and what was acceptable at the time. But as many of you have reflected, times shift, cultures shifts, um, communities shift. And we shouldn't be so um rooted in the past that we don't shift the orientation of our institutions to continue to reflect um the want and needs of the community. So um, I'll be voting in support of this name change and not because um I think that um, Woodrow Wilson was an awful person, but because I think that the community who's brought this, members of our community who brought this ask forward make a valid case and a shift is warranted. I'll also um, just add that in thinking about the name that has been chosen, many people have already spoken to um Dolores Silas and her achievements. I think um it's a really fitting selection, not because, and as, as I said before, we've got great people in Tacoma, in this community. We could pick from a list of a thousand people. So I'm glad that the board isn't chose, isn't required to pick an actual name and to be um on the hook for deciding the person when a name change like this comes forward. But I do think that Dr. Silas reflects kind of the contributions to both our educational and civic communities um and an orientation towards equity and inclusion that we are pushing back against. Um, that was associated with um Wilson's legacy. So I do think um it is a fitting thing. And I don't think this is necessarily about her race or her identity. I think it's about her contributions and who she is more fully. So I'll say that. Um, and just generally, I want to emphasize too, it's been expressed in certain, in members' comments already tonight, that this isn't about forgetting our history. It's about um continually to create a future that all of our citizens are proud of and can lean fully into and um build upon. So uh like others have shared, you, anyone who graduated from Wilson High School, graduated from Wilson High School. You're coming back to a reunion of Wilson High School, but moving forward, students will be reuniting around a different identity and a different name. Still a great place, but a different identity. Um, and with that, um, are there any other comments from student members or other members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the recommendation to change Wilson High School's name to Dr. Dolores Silas High School um and to officially adopt item thirteen point one, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Um, and just finally, I, I'll just want to offer to, to our student board members, I just want to thank you all for being here tonight and to sharing, for sharing your comments. I actually got a little teary eyed when you all started speaking. Um, to be honest, like this, as um Director Bonbright shared, this is a hard thing and as grownups, you sometimes don't know what the right thing to do is, but when you have students who are standing up and so bold as you are and affirming one direction or the other, I, it gave me strong legs to stand on. So I just want to thank you all for sharing your voice and contributing to this decision tonight. Director Leon, did you have a hand up?
I did, yeah. Just uh, I think it may be, yeah, I'd like to hear and maybe the community would like to hear any statements if possible from Principal Ray and Superintendent Antono, now that we've taken the vote.
Superintendent Antono, you're muted.
My comments are mostly that I appreciate um, um, Principal Ray. Um, she did hard work and it was a long process. And um, the, we have a policy so that this is um, you know, so that this process is, you know, is respected. Um, I love the comments I heard from our youth and from the board members because I think that um, this board has demonstrated that they're always willing to do the hard thing. And uh, moving forward past um a racist, um, a racist statement or a racist um entity, I think is the right thing to do. And we're going to be asked to do right things along as we go past this period of systemic racism. It's about making changes and about looking forward and not looking back. And that's what you did tonight and I'm proud of you. We look forward.
Thank you. Principal Ray, I know that you're on. Did you, no pressure to share comments, but any?
Um, I, I would just love to um, take the opportunity to thank our committee who has been working on this process for a year now. Um, and I really appreciate their um willingness to volunteer and be a part of really difficult conversations. I also want to thank all those community members who have um been in communication with me uh via telephone, social media, email, um, who have really engaged in conversation and who have shared their opinions respectfully and thoughtfully. I appreciate that very, very much. And I love Wilson High School. I um will always love Wilson High School, but I do look forward to the change that Silas High School can bring about for our community. Um, and I just want to share that um, a voicemail that was left um on our uh school office voicemail today uh that included hate speech and, hate speech and racial slurs directed at me is absolutely evidence of the need for this change. And so I want to say that out loud and I um, I want to share that it would have been easier to continue with Wilson, no Woodrow, and I would have supported that had the board voted for that option or another option, I would have supported that. Um, but again, I think that that voicemail today is absolutely evidence that this is the right decision and um, we are prepared to move forward with the work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And so there's lots of work ahead for us to implement this change. It isn't just about flipping the switch overnight. Um, so we look forward to future updates around um, process of engaging with the school community further to figure out all the logistics of the shifts that we've talked through the course of this long process. But again, thanks you to everyone who put in the time to come to this recommendation for the board. All right, moving on to item number fourteen, report to the board. There are none tonight. Item fifteen, board comments and reports. Um, about committee reports, committee events or any other updates from the board. So I'll start with um, I'll start with our student board members, just to um get you. Um, just, I'll start with student board members because you were still in my eyesight. Um, Nathan, do you have any comments tonight or any report?
Yeah, um, so last time I said I would talk about sports because I was going to be in it and uh they have started. So Wilson started last week, um, and it's gone well so far, I'd say. Uh, everything's safe and it's gotten more efficient over time, which I'm glad, you know, everyone's, when we, because we have to wait to get in and, and the lines are always safe and it's gotten faster, which is nice, uh, as everyone's gotten used to the process. Um, and then uh exercising with masks was a little tough at first, but we've gotten used to it, I think. Uh, more or less at this point. So that's uh, yeah, I think it's going well. And um, I wouldn't recommend any big changes right now. I think, I think uh it's going well. So yeah, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Um, I'll just call on the other student board members because I think I still see your icons. Jasmine, any report tonight?
I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Indigo, any other report or comments tonight?
I have no report. I just want to say how grateful I am to be a part of this board and to be a part of the changes that we're making and the impact that we're making.
We're grateful to have you. Thank you. Um, Caitlin, any report tonight?
Um, not really. Just wanted to give feedback on the new schedule. It's been like, it's been harder to wake up early, but and like checking every, like checking the schedule after every class to see when the next one starts, but I think like, it's nice to have the classes split up and like the class, it's harder or it's easier to concentrate. And I think overall it'll be smoother.
Can you say more about easier to concentrate in the split up? Can you describe what you mean for us just a little bit?
Yeah, so like originally we had ninety minutes and then it was hard to stay focused the whole time. And like, not all teachers would give breaks. So now that we have thirty minutes and then one hour, it feels a lot, like class goes a lot quicker and it's just easier not to get distracted.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. I know that just from a work standpoint, ninety minute meetings, you need a break at forty-five minutes. So I totally hear what you're saying and I'm glad that that adjustment is a little bit easier for you all to manage. These updates just about your experience are really helpful to hear and it's nice to know. So thanks for sharing. Um, Director Leon, any board report or comments tonight? Thank you. Director Stroger, any comments or report tonight?
Uh, no comments. I know we got J Mac tomorrow, but I'm sure Director Bonbright's going to share about that. So I won't let her do it.
Thank you. Director Bonbright, please put in the Bonbright.
Yeah, hi. Uh, sorry, I, my computer went out again on, I had back on my phone, but apparently for some reason the picture isn't showing. So it's just that kind of, it's just that kind of night. Um, anyway, um, yeah, I, I was just going to say tomorrow uh, Director Stroger and I will be um on the J Mac, the Joint Municipal Action Committee meeting and we will be initiating our process into this new project that J Mac is doing to bring um you know, purpose and more direction to what the Joint Municipal Action Committee we're going, is going to be uh working on collectively around um communal and um community impact. Um, especially um, you know, one of the big focuses we're going to have is how to undo racism in our society uh in the way we, our institutional racism that exists and um kind of identify it and collectively as, as elected bodies in our community to try and work to eradicate it. So um, and we starting tomorrow with our meeting, so it's going to be a, a pretty exciting beginning to a six month process where we're just going to have the conversation about how we best organize and, and focus. And then after that, um, it'll be kind of the way we do our work in the future. So looking forward to it.
Thank you. Director Keating, any report tonight?
Um, just two things. Um, and not really legislatively, um, I think uh earlier in the week, I think um I, it was presented that um the legislature, the state legislature typically um has a, a, around a thousand bills during a legislative session. And because of um the length of time that being in a remote setting is taking, um, it's anticipated um that only a hundred bills will make it to the governor's desk by the end of session. So um, in, in our WADA call today, just seeing like how in the um committee assignments and the ways the bills are moving through, it, it definitely is um clear that the process has been dramatically slowed down. So um, so there's, there's not a lot uh of updates as far as that goes. But I did want to say that um, so last week was National Counselors Week. Um, and on Monday, um, so first of all, I mean, I feel like I always talk about our school counselors, but I'm going to talk about them again. Um, so I just want to um celebrate our um amazing counselors that we have in the district. Um, and on Monday, I was able to participate in a professional development training by the interventional, uh intervention counselor, um Taylor Meyer at um, at Mount Tahoma. And they put on this really dynamic um PD training um titled uh How to Mourn With Your Students: Things We've Lost in COVID. And it was this really dynamic um way that um to support teachers and helping students have those conversations and counselors as well about the things that we've lost. Um, and so that it's, it was, it's a space to create a space for students to talk about that. Um, so I just wanted to give um Taylor, um, you know, just kudos because it was an amazing um training and um really highly attended. So um, other than that, um, that's all I have.
Thank you. And just by way of updates, I wasn't able to attend the Foundation for Tacoma Students' full board meeting, but I was able to attend a couple of the commi, the smaller committee assignment meetings in the course of the last month or so, a few weeks. And just, um, I don't have a concrete like um takeaway to share with you all, but they're in the midst of some strategic planning too. So as that continues to move forward, we bring some more updates about that work. There are lots of community partners engaged in that work too. So it's a good way to hear input from partners about what are, what's happening in services to youth and students across the community. So I'll keep you posted there. Additionally, just um, building off of Director Keating's last comment about what was lost during COVID, it triggered uh article that I was reading, a recollection of an article that I was reading recently and a few articles I've been reading. And I just want to offer that in this time, everything's, we all know that everything's been reshuffled. We've had to rethink how we do all kinds of things that we were so accustomed to doing in one way or, or another. And I think that early on in the COVID pandemic, with respect to education, immediately people out in the education research and education um like think tank community, we're talking about the learning loss, the learning loss, the learning loss. And it was just so much of a focus on how much kids are losing in this time. But I just want us to be careful. I, I always do this. I'm always like thinking out loud about the things that I would just share because these are the things that I think about all day long. I work in education too, so I think about this all day long. But I just think it's important for us to be careful about how we talk about things. Because when we start talking about loss, and I'm not saying we as if, we as a board are doing that, but when we talk about loss, I can imagine that it triggers for students and families, like I'm behind or I'm falling, like I'm not going to be successful or, or um that things related to their education are lost. And I just want to um remind us all that we learn all the time in lots of different contexts. We learn before school, after school, in summer, that different experience we have contribute to how we make sense of things that we're learning in school, how we apply it when we're out of school. So I just um, as we So I just um, as we continue to move forward and think about um coming back to school face to face, I just encourage us to not um think in the context of loss or behind or um off track, but just meet kids where they are, support them in moving forward. Know that there's multiple pathways to being successful, that opportunities aren't lost to you and closed to you and that we will continue to get through this together. Um watch educational programs, watch like get outside, explore. So we, there are lots of ways for us to keep learning, even if we're not in the classroom or if we're not in formal learning settings. And we will all kind of move past this time period and be successful and keep moving together. So that's just something that's been on my mind, just how we frame this time and how we think about what we're experiencing. Um and just making sure that we keep a positive orientation to moving forward. So I also just want to reflect back to the board and superintendent and leadership team about how grateful I am for you all um to really dig into um difficult topics like considering a name change. And we've been engaged in this conversation for many months now, even though I know many of the community members who sent emails in the last week or two felt like this process was rushed. It was, it has been some time since this came to us and we started the conversation. So I appreciate that every time we've talked about this, people's questions and comments have gotten a little bit more refined and a little bit more nuanced. I just want to um reflect back my appreciation to you all for digging into all the issues that we need to discuss and address so thoughtfully. So. With that, I will move on to item number 16, announcement of future board meetings. Thursday, February 18th, we'll meet for a study session at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, February 23rd, we'll meet at 6:00 PM for a board retreat. Thursday, February 25th, we'll meet at 6:00 PM for a regular business meeting. Any other comments or from the board before we move on to item number 17? Seeing none, we'll go on to item number 17 and call us adjourned. Thank you all for the meeting tonight.